We'll call the order, the regular city council meeting of December 9th, or December 11th, 2017. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, we have two absent this evening, Councilman Rizzi and Councilwoman Walton, both had work scheduling conflicts.
I move to excuse their absence.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of the minutes, November 27th, 2017.
I've got a few here.
Go ahead Glenn.
Page two, the bottom line, Kibble stated he's happy people and R should be deleted and it should be recognize it for what it is. Page three, the third paragraph down, the end of that first sentence after but we enjoy it should be added that there is. And at the bottom of the page, the last line, it says Mr. Arcatis, and I think that Joe had actually said his name as Mr. Arcatis, but it actually should be Mr. Sclafani. Are you still there?
I'm trying to find it.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, I don't want to speed through. And on page four, right in the middle, if you see the line, it says it states the adequacy of the corrective action is pursuant to the RC. It should actually, I said CR and it should be CR for the closure report. There was RCs in that document all over the place too, for the restrictive covenant, but CR was the closure report. I think page 10, I also have something. Oh, yes, the second to last line in there, Chuck Harmon, he was a Navy, you've got a Navy SEAL, he was actually a Navy CB. That's all ahead, thank you.
I'll move the minutes.
Maggie?
Oh, just kidding.
Did you have something too Maggie?
Yes, just a point of parliamentary procedure, there was a correction stated in the minutes on page two correcting a name, Arcatis. Technically, under Robert's rules, you're not supposed to change a name unless that name was stated. So if that's what the gentleman said, Arcatis, then that's the name. You can make the correction further in the minutes or further in tonight's meeting, but you can't alter what's been sent. So if that's what he said, that's what he said. Thank you.
Carl?
Glenn was absolutely right, Chuck Harmon was a CB, okay. Page nine, okay, four lines from the bottom of the first paragraph at the top where the, where I had said focused on land development and the dynamics are very different from then the historical commission. And I also added the cultural arts commission at the end of that sentence, but that was omitted, okay, in these notes. And I think that should be added, okay, that I mentioned cultural arts commission along with historical commission. Other than that, if it's relatively close, I don't care, you know, let it go.
Do we got a motion?
I will move the minutes.
No support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approval of the bills?
I have some questions.
Go ahead Mary.
Okay, so I'd like to start off on page three of four on the check register for City of South Lyon. If you look all the way down to the bottom of the page, it's about 246, it's the seventh line up Highland Treatment, Inc., November 2017, routine checkups, $600.
That is the payment to HTI for our Class B operator for the month of November. That's the gentleman that is covering that required DEQ placement with the retirement of Bob Martin.
Okay.
Next page, actually no, it would be page one of five, it's oddly numbered, invoice GL distribution. It's the very first one, engineering fees for HRC, 130, site plan fee.
I am not sure exactly which site plan that is, but they review all the site plans that come in to make sure that drainage is properly in place, that it meets all of the standard city engineering specifications, things like that.
Okay. I'm still going, sorry. Next page, HRC for 1458, it says phase two stormwater.
That is the required stormwater asset management and permit requirements that DEQ has for us. It's done every five years and it's always done by an engineer.
Okay, so this is customary?
Yes.
Okay. Next page. Repair maintenance, Corin Maine, 360, first line. What's up there?
That is for a new tool, perhaps, we've got Ron Beeson here this evening, he could better explain the shut-off tool that we purchased for the water department.
DPW.
DPW, okay, it's basically a tool that they use for shutting off the main for different water leaks, different work that they're doing. We did not have one before, we had borrowed it. We were in need of one, we're unable to borrow one, so we went ahead and purchased one so that we have it on hand for future reference.
Okay, okay, and then if you go just a little further down, HRC professional service for $9,169, what is this for?
That is for work that they're doing on preparing all of the bid specifications and documentation to send out for bid painting the interior and exterior of the elevated storage tank.
The water tower.
The water tower.
Okay, do we have any information as to if we have a bid chosen yet? What's the info on that?
It is still out to bid, that is the type of bid that would go out for 60 to 90 days.
Okay, is $10,000 almost, I mean, let's round down, 91?
That is standard and reasonable for putting together engineering bid specifications.
Is this something that our department could have done without hiring HRC?
No.
Okay, I guess again, my concern is, I repeated this, not at the last meeting, at the meeting prior when you were present, I feel as though having a liaison for DPW and having the water department here to speak to these issues is something that I feel comfortable with because they are licensed and they are qualified to speak to, whether they could do this job as opposed to hiring out to HRC, which would be more expensive. And being as the city is financially restricted, I really hesitate to spend money that we don't need to spend.
This was a project working with HRC that was in the motions before Bob Martin retired. And it was Bob's expectation and Bob's plan to have HRC do the specifications.
I was actually told differently, I was told that HRC was not a part of this and that the bids were done through the department.
No.
Okay, well, I think we have differing opinions on this. And again, I would feel comfortable speaking to someone who's qualified in the field to say, well, you know what, we're qualified to do this, or you know what, we need to hire it out to HRC because we aren't. But again, I'm, I don't know, I'm just one of seven. Thank you.
Carl?
Okay, I'm relatively new to this, and I try to eliminate questions before meeting, but I, there's a few I'd just like to ask. On page one, okay, okay, page 14, second group here, CIB planning, planning consultant fees, $3,100, okay, is that a check we write out to the CIB company, okay, for a period of six months' service, or what? Just how does this, how does it work?
That is retainer as well as per project basis reviews, whether it be putting together documentation, meeting with clients, reviewing site plans, building plans, to make sure that everything is in compliance with zoning ordinance. There are a lot of different things that CIB planning has been contracted to do for the city.
Okay, but do they do that or bill that on a monthly basis?
Yes.
Because the last month or so, they haven't done much, you know.
I would beg to differ, as you're probably not fully cognizant of all the things that Carmine does and all the phone calls that he takes from projects that are in planning stages.
Okay, it's possible, but all the planning commission meetings are continually canceled, canceled, canceled?
That doesn't mean that there is not work going on.
Okay, but just bring it to point. I got another one, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Mary had one of them, and I don't, I don't need to do that one. Down on page 4.4, 4 slash 4, on the bottom, there's a check evidently written to Windstream, service period 11/29/17 through 12/28/17, $2086. What is that for? I've asked other people, they didn't know.
Windstream is the city's phone service.
It's the phones?
Yes.
Special, you mean?
It is our telephone lines coming into all of City Hall, to the police department, I believe to the DPW, it is also the rental of the actual phones and the voicemail system. It is the maintenance agreement on all of the above, any long-distance charges that there may be on city phones.
It goes through them before it gets to AT&amp;T?
We do not go through AT&amp;T, Windstream is our phone company.
Okay, you got me, I never knew anything about it. Okay, there's one more. Okay, that's the one Mary had, okay, elevated storage tank painting, $9,169, professional services, Hubble, Roth &amp; Clark, last I knew, they haven't painted it yet.
They haven't, they're putting, they were putting the bid specifications together to put it out to bid to be painted either in the spring or the fall of '18.
Okay, we paid them, we're paying them this much now?
For their engineering services, yes.
Make note of that. Thank you, that's all.
Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm looking at the revenue report, and on the revenue report, I'm looking at the amended budget for 217, 218 in terms of revenue coming in from real property taxes, and I'm looking at the year-to-date balance, and the date is November 30th. There is about a $400,000 difference, I just want to get a feel a little bit as to that particular dollar amount. Does that mean that we are going to have roughly $400,000 coming in in February taxes? That seems a little high for February, or did we overestimate?
I did not put that number in there, I can't answer that. There, it could be an overestimation, it could be delinquent taxes, it could be people that have successfully gone to the tax tribunal and had their taxes reduced since the budget was approved. We've had several cases like that, where we've had, you know, properties that go to the tax tribunal for reduction and been successful.
My next question is, is that we amend the budget when we have a change in expenditures? Is there also a requirement that we amend the budget if our estimates of revenue are determined at some point to not be accurate? Do you also have to amend the budget?
You don't have to amend for revenues, but you can. I was planning to look at revenue amendments at the end of this quarter with Lori.
Okay. It's just a large number, so.
I agree, but thank you very much.
Anyone else on the bills? Got a motion?
I move, we move the bills.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of the agenda?
I'd like to suggest that at our last meeting with the permit fee issue, it got overlooked to address the furnace and air conditioner aspect of it. We have five people here, if everyone was agreeable to amend the agenda, to get that on, just to make that correction now, because it didn't end up being addressed at the last meeting.
We've already made the correction, or the changes on the schedule and modified the applications, was it not fully approved by the council?
The, that was for the water heater.
Okay, because both of them were amended, the day after that council meeting, I received modified applications and the change of fees from Dennis Smith.
Okay, well, then let's, we need to do a pro forma amendment then, because that, the language actually, I watched the tape and there was some back and forth, and the motion actually was just simply to amend the water heater and an effective date, so.
So just to clarify, what was changed? Was it just the water heater, or was it both the water heater and the air conditioner?
Both the water heater and the heating and HVAC.
Okay, thank you.
So I'd like to make the motion that we amend the agenda to address the furnace and air conditioning.
Do you want that as number three under old business?
It's fine with me.
One second.
All in favor?
Well, this is something, everybody's got to vote on it, because it's a supermajority to be able to amend it for an action item. Do you want to do a roll call?
Mike Kibble?
Yes.
Preesian?
Yes.
Pelchat?
Yes.
Richards?
Yes.
Kurtzwell?
Yes.
Unless anyone's got anything else, I'd move the agenda as amended.
Second?
Just a really quick discussion, Lynn, we were talking before the meeting started, did our representative from MERS make it?
Yes, he's right in the back corner.
Okay, great, okay, no, all right, so, we had a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? At this time, we'd welcome anyone for public comment, please state your address and name.
Good evening, council, citizens, Ryan Lehr, 716 Grand Court, a couple of things I wanted to mention tonight. One is the annual Christmas party, I was invited by Carl to attend, and it was so nice to see everybody there and all the people, the election workers, all the people that work year-round for our city. Hats off to Corey Ball in the hotel for providing us such a wonderful venue, the hotel looks great, and I'm glad it's back open for everybody to enjoy. It was great to see everybody come out and just have a great evening, and it was a great night for South Lyon. And before council tonight, I attended with Carl our 66th Annual Senior Citizens Christmas Dinner, provided by the Qantas and the Girl Scouts, and it, what a wonderful dinner that Phil and his team put on, worked very hard, provided everybody with dinner and coffee and dessert, entertainment, and even our cadet Le Chance was there, and our former mayor candidate Ashley Enstead was there helping as well. So it was nice to see all of South Lyon pulling together to help our seniors. That's all I have tonight, thank you.
Linda Ross, 373 Harvard Avenue, I am the South Lyon Historical Society President, and I am here to thank the community for their support with our last two events at the Village. On Sunday, November 26th, we had two dulcimer concerts in the chapel, and each had over 45 people in attendance, and we'd like to thank the Village String Dulcimer Group too for their lively entertainment and the beautiful music they provided, and we look forward to having them back next year, which will be their 10th year at the Village. I'd also like to thank the community for coming out and supporting Cool Yule this year at the Village. It was the best attended so far, the weather was good, it wasn't freezing cold, it wasn't snowing, it wasn't raining, so we had a real good attendance that evening, and I think everyone had a good time. I'd like to thank Harvey Waddell for being our grand marshal and for announcing the gingerbread contest winners. Thank Mayor Pelchat for his warm greeting to our visitors and for giving the key to the city to Santa, that was very special, thank you. Special thank you to Santa and Mrs. Claus for taking time out of their busy schedule to greet and listen to over 100 children with their requests for Christmas. Patience surely is a virtue. Also like to thank the Girl Scouts from Troop 70869 for their help and as Santa's helpers this year in the school. Thank you to the high school jazz choir and the Presbyterian tuba band for their wonderful music in the chapel, both performances were well-attended, and we thank them for coming out. Thank you to the senior center for providing all the good cookies, and the freight house for the bake sale, and for the hot chocolate to warm us from the chill of the evening. Thank you to the fire department and to the police department for their part in making sure that Santa arrives safely, and for traffic control so that there was no mishaps along the way. And also, because I don't see Kathy here tonight, I'd like to thank her and the entire Cool Yule committee for all their hard work in putting this together, the parade, the events that went on through town, it was very nice, they did a lot of work for that. And then last, I would like to thank all of my society members for their support and help with these events, because without them, these would not happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to old business and our bi-weekly discussion on downtown.
Just a couple items on the report that's in front of you. The Good Day, A Good Day Cafe should be open Thursday, and they were starting last weekend to actually use the kitchen and get it in shape. If they're not open Thursday, they said it would be the following week, they're waiting for the final health inspection, so hopefully that'll happen. It'll be a soft opening, there's no grand opening yet scheduled, they're going to wait till probably after the first of the year for an official grand opening. The city's design committee, a combination of city and DDA involvement, is going to be reviewing the facade for 115 and 117 North Lafayette, kind of an exciting new addition to downtown, bringing those two buildings back, stripping off, those are the buildings that house venue and exquisite kitchen. So we're going to get those buildings, and it'll be a good message to that not just things in the background are happening, but a lot of good things are happening, the physical evidence, the change. We've had a lot of activity by housing developers coming into City Hall, looking at property, and they actually are hiring realtors to approach property owners, so we're going to see, I think, some movement this coming year. They've all been given copies of the master plan, and I've had follow-up meetings with a couple of them, so we'll see how that progresses, it's an exciting move, we'll see our master plan move forward. The, a couple items I want to just keep in front of council is that we really need to make progress, I'm hoping that we can, city administration and the city attorney move forward on enforcing the ordinance for maintenance of four key buildings downtown that I think are really detracting from what we're trying to do. I think they're having a negative impact on property values. I called them out here, 113 North Lafayette, 335, excuse me, 113 North Lafayette, 135 East Lake, 335 South Lafayette, and 110 Detroit Street. And I think, I know every time that we get our city attorney involved, but I think this is important to, a lot of time went in by citizens in this council to put that ordinance together, and I think we need to enforce it, and those four properties are killing us.
What was the third one?
The third one was 335 South Lafayette.
Thank you.
Other than that, I'm looking forward to a great year for 2018, both in the businesses and the industry in town, and I think exciting things are ahead. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Any questions?
Thank you, Bob, I, I know a little bit about those properties, okay, as you well know. I'm looking at it all the time, talking to them, and there's nothing to report on 113 and 135 at this time, other than what you've seen before you, okay. I'm not sure about the Detroit Street address, I think it's that vacant house, Kidder Connor from the old one up.
There is a resident.
Yeah, okay, it's been vacant for years. And there's another Leon House that's behind there, I showed you, that's vacant for years. But I've been on it, Bob, been talking to them, but I'm not getting anywhere yet, I hope something breaks loose, I'll be as glad as you to see what happens.
I think the talking's over with, I mean, I know it's not easy to approach the subject, but I don't think talking's going to get it done, I think it's just enforcement of the ordinance that the city put together.
Yeah, you're probably right, I don't have any answers for it, I've tried for years to get something going on that, but he would, when he was alive, he wouldn't do it, okay. Anyway, give me your estimate, please, okay, on how closely you expect in the next five years that we will be able to coincide or match up with the master plan as it is right now, on all the developments you're looking at.
Well, the master plan, there's no way that document's going to be put together in five years, but I think we could make substantial progress on key parts of it.
A few little steps forward, you know.
No question. I think that we're already in discussions with one major block along South Lafayette, we're looking at the housing components of two or three other blocks. So I would say it's reasonable in the next two to five years to see a significant amount of those things become reality. And it's the residential growth in not only our city, but the surrounding city that's making it all very viable.
Maggie? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to go to this item regarding the properties that you want enforcement on. Tim, have you, have you and Lynn sat down with Bob on this, is there a?
We haven't, we haven't, I just wanted to bring it to our attention.
First that I've heard from it, I'd really prefer that he brings it to me rather than in a public meeting, so that we could have addressed it, but I'm sure we will do that.
Okay.
Actually, it was not the first time, I've brought this up at city council meetings in the past.
Okay, well.
And I would, I know that it's a problem having our city attorney involved, and that's why I'm trying to just say that there needs to be some direction, because the budget's tight, and I know I've been told not to involve the city attorney at any time, so I'm being very conscious of the budget. But we specifically talked about these same properties here in this council before.
No, and, and I would agree, this is, this is, I mean, I've been beating the drum for two years regarding the downtown, so I think what we have to do is find a way to understand that, that there are going to be times when the city attorney is going to be having to bill maybe, you know, for large amounts of legal services that are related to visions that this council has set forward. And I specifically recall being at a vision session where city council, everybody agreed, and I think that's still the same consensus with the new members that are here on council, that the downtown would have an emphasis. Now, in making the downtown an emphasis, it means all hands on deck, and to me, that means the city attorney plays an active role, and this is not a time to be sitting there chinging, this is just my personal opinion. I can't, I don't speak for council, but for me, I'm saying you have to prioritize these attorney fees, and, and the vision has been downtown priority, do what needs to be done, you have an issue of enforcement, maybe Dennis and the guys can do it, but you're probably going to need legal strategy on it because you're going to require some court time. To me, those are legitimate, billable times for the city attorney, and if it gets expensive, it gets expensive, because I know down the line, you get those buildings fixed, the reward is going to be new businesses and tenants coming in, so, so pay the piper now. That's just my opinion. So I would suggest people get together and come back with a plan in January as to how this is going to be handled. I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the rest of council thinks, but that's just my two cents. But I think we should probably talk a little bit about some direction on this.
Mary?
I just think it's incredibly difficult for you to prioritize how
I just think it's incredibly difficult for you to prioritize how to use attorney fees. I really, I, how do you utilize your attorney when council will scrutinize you for the bills? It's just incredibly difficult to make that determination. So I don't know, I think you're doing the right thing by kind of handling it and then coming to us and addressing it and seeing where we need to point you in which direction. Because otherwise, what if you went to the city attorney and utilized services that we might not be happy with? And then we come at you and say, oh, you shouldn't have done that. But how are you supposed to know? How do you prioritize that? So in this sense, I actually applaud you for taking the time to handle this yourself, tackle it yourself, and then come to us and say, hey, just bringing this to your attention. And this is something you've done to us before, where you've brought it to our attention. 110, we've spoken about, 110 Detroit Street, we've spoken about before, and that's been on our radar for some time as well. So I don't really know what else you could do in terms of prioritizing attorney services.
Well, I think it was, the intent was that the administration would be given some direction that would be okay to utilize.
Absolutely.
City attorney.
And that's reasonable.
Glenn.
I think that two of these properties in particular are really kinda critical solely because in the event of mischief, a fire or something, we could lose our entire downtown. Both of them are, are tied to whole blocks of historic buildings. So I don't know how practical it is, but the idea of, if they were to ascertain what the costs of complying to the building standards, they might end up being motivated to simply move the property, sell it to somebody that wants to actually do something with it. It might end up incentivizing their decision-making. If they wanted to end up spending the money to make the thing more valuable, more power to them, but they need to end up getting on the stick to do that. They can't just sit there and have this potential hazard sitting in our downtown, so.
That's a great point. Glenn. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. We're all agreed.
Consider resolution changing the City of South Lyon MERS retirement plan for new hires in the non-union administrative employee division.
This is the first step in making changes to the MERS retirement plan for new hires. All of the collective bargaining agreements require that non-union administrative employees have their plan in place prior to negotiations or moving forward with the implementation of a DC plan. What we're looking at is a DC plus plan. We've talked about this in the past. It's defined contribution plus a 457. The 457 has a sliding scale contribution. The way it is set up right now, the city would provide 4% of the employees' salaries into the defined contribution. Employees would give 5% of their salaries into the defined contribution, and there would be a sliding scale match of up to 3% in the 457, meaning that the employees can provide up to 3% additional into the 457, and the city will match it, but the city's contribution goes into the defined contribution as well. There is a five-year cliff vesting, meaning that you are not vested until you have been in the program for five full years. I'm trying to think if there's anything else.
One thing I'd like to ask you, that there was some ambiguity with the probationary period. One document said six months. I thought I had read in another one that said there was no probationary period, that it started right out of the gates.
Um.
Was that correct?
Mr. Mayor.
Tim.
In communication with Lori Moser, she advised that under the current DB plans, there is no waiting period when a new employee is hired to participate in the retirement plan. I know that DB and the DC may be apples and oranges, and by the way, John Wall from MERS is here to address any questions that may arise from their perspective, or if you have questions of MERS. So my, my response to that was that there shouldn't, likewise shouldn't be any, any reason that a new employee in the non-union group participating in the DC plus plan would need a waiting period.
Right.
To be clear, the, there is a probationary period provided for in the personnel manual, but that does not appear to, it is not currently being applied in the retirement plan context in your current retirement plans.
Nor do I see a benefit. If you have to have five years of vesting, either you perform in that six months or you don't, so you won't end up being subject to receive any benefit from a contribution. So it seems like that's an, an extra incentive to move the, the clock up six months so they Well, this, this certainly accomplishes a, a great deal of what our major concern has been with the, the legacy costs of having the defined benefit program that we simply don't have the resources to be able to entertain any longer, so. And I, I'm appreciative of the idea that there is match money in the event that they want to augment what their own forecasted retirement would be. One thing I don't recall reading in here, is there a cap on what their contribution can be? I mean, it will match up to 3%, but in the event that an employee wanted to, to go beyond that, do they have the ability to?
They do. The IRS caps it, and I believe it varies from year to year, but John could probably answer that better.
Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Wall from MERS. Excuse me. So the defined contribution plan has an IRS limit, but being that it's gonna be capped out at the 4% employer and the 5% employee contribution with up to an additional 3% from the employer, I don't think that's gonna be an issue. I believe it's about $54,000 annually. So the only thing that I think there would be potential for the cap being met would be in the 457 where the employee would electively defer. And for 2018, I believe that number's gonna be $18,500. And if the employee happens to be over the age of 50, they can contribute up to an additional $6,000, so 24/5. The IRS issues their limits, just as they do with 401K-type plans every year. The deferred compensation of 457 plans typically will go up about $500 per year.
So they're augmenting their 457 isn't going to likely end up being a concern then?
Not likely. There, there may be somebody periodically, if you hire somebody, you know, the times when we see it most common, or maybe you hire somebody who's retired from another community, they're drawing a pension there, they don't need all the income, they're looking for a tax shelter, so they sock away as much money as they can. You see it sometimes with people who, you know, kids are finally out of the house and they're trying to catch up for retirement so they can take advantage of that additional contribution, and it doesn't, you know, hit the city in any way.
In the event of somebody moving towards triggering that IRS cap, do you guys monitor that, or is that incumbent on the employee to monitor?
It should be monitored by the city as a matter of payroll. So, you know, typically by, you know, that last month of the year, you should see if anybody's getting close to that number. If we do audit the file and we were to find that there are people that have contributed in excess, we do require that that, you know, that they try and have a corrective action.
Well, I just wanna know that we need, keep our eyes open then.
Yeah, so there are some checks and balances.
Yeah, all right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mary.
I just have a quick question regarding the mandatory 4% from the employer, mandatory 5% from the employee. So if it's mandatory that they take 5% of their paycheck to put toward this, and then they have the option to contribute an additional 3%, that's 8%. I don't foresee employees giving up 8% of their paycheck.
I, I think that we.
Is that something?
We thought about this in a manner that would be mindful of the budget while also trying to incentivize employees to contribute additional money to their, to their retirement. You know, experts would say that it's probably a good idea to contribute upwards of 15% in order to retire comfortably, and that's, you know, not taking into consideration retire healthcare and things along those lines. So 15% is kind of the, a good rule of thumb. By structuring it exactly the way that we did, it allows the employee to get there. So the, the 4% employer and the 5% employee is gonna get to about 9% total. Over someone's career, we just kinda ran some numbers with, with those, assuming, you know, a 6% rate of return over one's career, so say from age 30 to age 65, so full, full career. That would only get them to about 55% of their working income in retirement, and the experts would say that 70 to 80% is actually a better number, that you have a chance to retire comfortably. So if that employee were to take into consideration half of that match, that would get to 12.
Half of the 5% or half of the?
Half of the additional 3%.
Okay, okay.
So that would get them to 12 total. So it would be 5 and 1/2 from the employer, 6 and 1/2 from the employee, with that same 6% rate of return assumption is gonna get them to 73% if they took advantage of the full match, so the full 3%, then that would be 15% all in, 7% from the employer, 8% from the employee, total of 15. That would get them potentially upwards of 90% over that, you know, 35-year career. So we backed into the numbers, and those numbers work, I think. If you leave it to the employee alone to contribute, the reality is that they just won't, like you said.
But it's their money.
So the 4% and the 5% mandatory gives some minimum level of contribution, and then if they wanna take, you know, the driver's seat to be able to contribute additional dollars, then they can. It's voluntary. That way, the city isn't just giving away money to people. If they're gonna put a little skin in the game, the city will put some skin in the game as well, and so it's even on both sides. You know, that will get people to that 15% number, which is a sustainable retirement. And that, that's overall what the goal is. And, you know, when Lynn and I were having conversations, it was to make sure that we structure a plan such that employees would have the ability to retire, you know, comfortably, but also to make sure that when people are hired here, that you have an attractive retirement plan. That was the budget that we were kind of given to work within, so you can certainly contribute additional dollars to the retirement plan if, if you wish to. These are just the, the numbers that were kinda drawn up ahead of time.
So is this mandatory 5%, mandatory 4%? Where do those numbers come from? Is this IRS standard?
That was, that was actually pre-negotiated with this non-union group.
I guess my concern is, do we know of any other communities that are doing this? Can I get some examples of communities where this is successful?
There are literally hundreds within MERS who participate in defined contribution plans.
That have these same rates, though? Cause I, my reservation is I don't wanna have, I don't want to put our employees at a disadvantage.
No, I understand. And, and again, trying to be mindful of budget. You can throw more money at it if you want to, that's completely fine. I did actually do some research, so in the defined contribution plan itself, the average employer contribution within the system is about just under 8%, and the average employee contribution is right around 4. So perfectly, perfectly in line on the employee side, you know, they would be putting in maybe 1% more. And then if you looked at 457 contributions, which is typically more of an elective type of, type of a program, not a, a requirement, the employers usually put money in the defined contribution plans, only about a half a percent on average. The employee contribution rate in the 457 is about 6 and 1/2.
I'm so sorry. You're, you're doing a great job. I'm really, it's been a long day, I'm struggling to keep up.
It's okay.
Can you backtrack to what you just said about the average percent that the city puts in? Did you say 8%?
That would be the average within the system in MERS.
And we're putting in 4%?
Uh, before the match.
Before the match, okay.
Correct. So if the full match were being taken, taken into consideration, it would be 7. So it's pretty close to, to the, to the average. There's gonna be, you know, I've seen some where the contribution from the employer is 16, 20. I've also seen it where it's 3 or 4. So it's, it's, it's in the ballpark.
Okay, I got a question.
Mary, are you done?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Carl.
Okay, a question, sir. There's a lot of them, but I'm trying to make it short.
It's okay.
Starting on the 1st of January, if we approve this, okay? And new hire, we make some new hires in our water department, cemetery department, DPW maybe, okay? And they say we elect not to sign up for this program because of their age, they're under 30 or whatever, and they don't plan to stay with the city that long. Do they opt out of participating with this, this service, okay? Or are they locked into it, okay?
Employees do not have the option to opt out of the retirement system.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would also clarify, this is only the non-union new hires.
Correct.
So you would, you have to deal with this same issue for your other divisions, which are largely matched up with the bargaining units in the unions.
Okay, well, the, the workers get different rates of pay, as you all know, the cemetery workers, and it's all here, and everything, okay? The numbers are gonna shake down, okay? Gradually, it's a step in the right direction, but it isn't going to alleviate or correct our current situation, which is drastic, okay, right now. But it is a step in the right direction. Let me ask you about, just, sometimes we hire summer help. I don't think we have any here, but other places do. Say we're hiring high school graduates, okay?
Temporary help wouldn't be eligible for the plan.
Okay, but then they go to college, and they come back to the city and work in the summertime, and they graduate from college and they come back to the city, and they wanna continue on with the city in a position, buy a house on Ada Street and raise a family, okay, and they walk to work at the DPW or whatever, you know? Okay? Maybe they don't plan, maybe they know about their health, they don't plan to make it to 60, okay? But they wanna, they wanna go along with things. Would their retirement be gradually prorated from the time they started in, in their, in their high school or college days, working for the city?
No, because they would be part-time employees and therefore not eligible for service credit.
If they're part-time, you're not eligible for the program, it doesn't vest, is that what you're saying?
You, you're not enrolled at all.
They're not eligible for the plan. So it would be non-union administrative full-time employees.
Non-union, and I'm talking non-union, yeah.
Yeah. And so then if you were to hire a, you know, police officer, if that police officer were full-time, they would go into the plan. I don't know if you hire part-timers, but it, but that was the way it was going to be structured, was that only full-time staff would be eligible. You can make the plan, the 457 plan, you have another provider who offers one, that may be eligible for elective deferrals that are not part of this plan. So in other words, if an employee were to start and they wanted to contribute, if they're eligible, I'm not sure if they are, but through that other 457 plan, that they can contribute if they wish to, but there's no match.
Okay, so they're coming in as non-union employees, and then maybe they elect to stay non-union, okay? They don't wanna join union, or maybe they elect to join union, okay, in certain departments or divisions. What's the situation in that respect, okay?
Carl, if they are a part-time employee, it doesn't matter, they are not eligible. The only positions that what we're looking at tonight applies to is the city clerk, city manager, chief of police, the DPW water wastewater superintendent, and the city bookkeeper. Five positions. If an employee comes into the city and works for DPW water wastewater full-time, but under the at-will chooses not to join the union, they would still join that division of MERS because it is the department that which they work.
Okay, all right.
So they, they would go into whatever the open active plan happens to be for that particular group of employees.
Okay, all right. No questions.
That does bring up a, a question, though. Well firstly, is this, once they fix a number, there, there was talk earlier when Sue was here, that if the city makes a change with our rate, then the employee has the ability to modify their rate?
That's the 457 sliding scale. So if the employee wants to start out contributing 1%, the city matches 1%. Two years down the road, if they wanna up that to 2%, they can, and the city would match that 2% then.
Can they back down as well?
And they can back down as well.
All right.
So under the rules of a defined contribution, the 401A plan, if, if the city were to structure it with that plan only and not with this defined contribution and 457 combo, essentially if they offered that same 4 and 5%, but with the match in the defined contribution plan, once that employee selects their contribution in the defined contribution plan, they can no longer change it.
Okay.
So that's why it's nice to have this flexibility. So when you do get somebody who's younger, and maybe they can't contribute, you know, the full amount.
Sure.
They can start in at the 5% of their own pay, and then as their career progresses, their financial situation changes, maybe they pay off a student loan, or, you know, kids are off to, to school, or whatever the case may be, they get out of diapers, then they wanna start contributing that 1 to 3%, then they can ratchet up or ratchet down that 3%, however they see fit. So it provides the flexibility of more like a 401K-type plan within the governmental plan, which typically lacks it.
Okay. There was also some discussion in there about transfer, you know, somebody gets promoted and how that will influence what, what happens with their, their rate. So could you kind of walk through, it, it seemed a little ambiguous to me when I was reading through it, so I don't know, maybe I just.
There are documents in here that allow, if we have an employee that's current There are documents in here that allow, if we have an employee that's currently in the defined benefit plan, and they are promoted or transferred within a division, say going from DPW to police, because they decided they wanted to be a police officer, they would remain in the defined benefit plan, they would not be forced as a new hire into the defined contribution.
Well, that would certainly make sense, but is, is it their decision, or is it simply they're locked in because they were in there?
It's their decision. They can choose to go to the defined contribution plan.
Clearly, that wouldn't be in their best interest, but I was just curious if they have the, the final say on what, what happens.
It may be, and, you know, let's say, for example, you get the employee who thinks, I'm not going to be here for ten years to vest in the defined benefit plan, I'd like to take advantage of the defined contribution plan because it's have a five-year vesting. So they do have the ability to do that.
Mm-hmm.
It would be somewhat unlikely, but those are the situations. We tried to think about it and think ahead and be proactive about this, knowing that at some point, somebody's going to get promoted, what's going to happen? And under the MERS rule is they go into the open active division if they're hired, rehired, or transferred. So if they were to promote from one defined benefit plan, they would go into the new open active plan, which would be the defined contribution plan. So by adopting this alternative transfer resolution, that avoids that problem and gives the employee the choice of the plan. As long as there's one active employee still working the defined benefit plan,
Right.
They can go into it.
Right.
Maggie?
No, Mary, go on, Mary.
Um, so my only thing is, I understand the benefits of this. I completely do. And I'm trying to put myself in the shoes of people who are interested in coming to South Lyon to work here. My reservation is only that I don't like having to tell people what to do with their money. And a mandatory contribution, to me, especially with the expenses of healthcare and taxes and whatever, whatever else is going on in people's lives, I don't like having to mandate that you're going to give us five percent of your paycheck, or you're going to contribute five percent to your paycheck. And it's going toward your retirement, and it's a benefit ultimately to the employee, but I just think that when they're ready, they can voluntarily contribute to their own.
Sure, and that's
That's my only reservation.
I guess I would argue, if you look at America as a whole, we're not the best at saving. And so by being parental about it on some level, and saying there's going to be some level of mandatory participation in the plan assures that they have at least some chance of having money in an account that they can use to be able to retire. If they want to save more, they can. But what happens sometimes is you get people who don't participate, and then you can't get them to leave because they need the healthcare and they don't have the money to retire. So the flip side of it is the alternative of having that person here who doesn't want to be here, but they're stuck. And so by putting a plan in place that gives some minimum level of, you know, retirement income to people, gives them a chance. So it's just a different perspective, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
And our current plan does have a required mandatory contribution as well, not five percent, but varying amounts. And the new ASME contract has it at, right now, two and a half percent.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of questions. Have you seen the House bill and the Senate bill?
I haven't seen it in its final draft yet, no, I have not. But it, it should not impact retirement in any way. It's, it's going to be more of the retiree healthcare. But there will be some funding, but go ahead with your question.
But the state
I might be able to answer generally.
But obviously, the state is moving forward with beginning to tackle these problems.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So for us, not to do something, I, I just think that it's, it's time that we need to deal with this issue.
Yeah, I mean, you know, to your point, I believe if there are minimum funding level requirements in either pension, so defined benefit, or retiree healthcare, which would be the defined benefit version of healthcare, they're putting in some thresholds of minimum funding levels. And if the municipality doesn't meet that, then there are some triggers that go into play, such as, you know, either closing a plan or having, having some sort of a plan in place to help either increase funding or eliminate future legacy costs. So yes, to your point, closing your defined benefit plan to future new hires is certainly one way to alleviate this, because you won't have that legacy cost for new hires. They'll just have a set, you know, either four percent or up to seven percent contribution going into their account.
I did have an opportunity to speak to a couple of ERISA attorneys on, on this plan, and this, this is a pretty decent plan. Is that your opinion?
I think that if you're talking to ERISA attorneys who work in the, the private sector, you would find this to be a very good plan.
Yeah, that's
If you're in public sector, it's in, in line with what would I consider to be normal and acceptable.
Yeah. But, but the, the point was, is I wanted to get a feel for, you know, what kind of range did this fall in, in terms of, you know, is this a, a good plan for the city to move forward? I understand the, the numbers part of it. I, I understand our unfunded pension liability, that's an issue that needs to be dealt with. And this is the first step in dealing with it, is moving into these hybrid kind of programs. And as long as the numbers are reasonable, and they appear to be reasonable, I know, for example, my husband and I, I mean, we're saving close to twelve percent of our income. We're making every effort to put away the max that we can into retirement vehicles, Roth IRAs, whatever. What I want to know on the, on the match side, let's say, a couple of years from now, that we get our finances under control, and we've get, and, and things look a little good, are we able to change this matchup number from three percent to four?
Yeah, absolutely. All of these documents are not set in stone. This is, they can be amended at some point in the future. So, you know, sometimes in lieu of a raise, maybe they would want to see an increase in their retirement contribution or something along those lines, absolutely.
So this gives us the flexibility, three years from now, five years from now, to sit down and just look on the matching side and manipulate those numbers a little bit?
Yeah, or maybe it would be the mandatory side, you know, to get that, so that it's five and five, for example, if you were to move up a percent, so that you can, you can mess with it however you want to make it work for you.
Yeah, but we got to start somewhere.
Yeah, agreed.
And Lynn, have you looked at this in terms of our budget?
I have.
And?
It looks good in terms of our budget, with the goal being that any money that we would have been contributing to employees that are being, their positions filled, that money will not be reduced. We will retain our contributions to MERS so that we can pay off that much more of our unfunded liability.
Okay, run that past me again.
Okay. So we were contributing for the two positions approximately twenty-one percent for one of the positions of employer contribution, and I believe it was twelve point seven five percent for the other positions that are currently open for the city. With the employer's reduction down to four percent from those higher percentages, that amount of money will still be going to MERS to pay down our unfunded liability. So we won't reduce what we budget each year to, to contribute to MERS. What we will do is take that additional funding and use it to pay additional on the unfunded liability.
Okay.
So, so this plan provides a savings, and that savings will be applied to pay down the liability.
Excellent, excellent. Okay, all right. Now, I, I just want to make sure I understand this. I work in DPW, and I'm a member of the union, and I'm a member of the defined benefit program. I now am going to get promoted, and I get promoted out of the union contract because I now am going to be supervisory, let's say. And where, where is, what program do I take? Do I take?
They have the option of staying in the defined benefits, open, non-union administrative plan, or moving to the defined contribution. So because they're a current employee, they can stay in the defined benefit plan, as long as there is someone in the defined benefit plan in that division currently working.
Okay, so, so an employee's retirement will not alter, if they want to hang on to what they have now, it will not alter if they start moving and their status changes from union to non-union?
Their contribution rates may vary mildly, because we do have different contribution rates for each of the defined benefit divisions, but they would stay in the defined benefit plan.
Benefit plan, okay.
And those employee contribution amounts, I don't think vary by much more than a half a percent.
Yeah.
So it's not that significant.
Does this, does this program also have what's called the multiplier?
No.
Okay.
Nope, this is just, just like your typical 401K type of a plan,
401K.
But it's called a 401A because it's a governmental plan.
Got it.
So it's, it's a fixed contribution plus whatever that match is. So all that the city will ever pay is whatever that employee contribution percentage is and multiply it by their payroll. So there's no legacy cost, no multiplier.
That is critical, because that
That was the goal.
Yeah. One of the things, I just want to let council know that I, I did a while ago speak with an individual over in Lyon Township regarding their legacy costs. And they are completely on the four fifty-seven, so they don't have legacy costs over in Lyon Township. I think there's maybe one or two employees that have a pension. Other than that, they are all on the four fifty-seven, and the township does a certain level of matching with that. And, and I will say that they have excellent employees in Lyon Township. So the, I don't think that what your pension program is necessarily dictates the quality of your labor force, because they are solely a four fifty-seven in Lyon Township, and no legacy costs. They got rid of their pension twenty years ago or something, and they have been able to attract very, very good employees. So I'm very confident with this one. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, thank you very much for being here, and good conversation by everyone on some very important questions. I guess my concern, and I'm absolutely hearing where you're at from this, Mary, on five percent of someone's salary going directly towards something, but my concern was that we weren't going to be able to offer a percentage that the majority of the articles that I'm reading and saw across the country is fifteen percent. And while I see the five percent automatically possibly being a problem, I think it's definitely the lesser of two evils on this, is because with the additional matching, we can offer a job here in the city of South Lyon that can allow people to get to what most professionals think is a reliable retirement. And I think that's, when you think about municipal jobs, you think about people that work hard and are committed, but you also, for all that time and commitment, you also are expecting to hopefully be able to retire and enjoy your golden years. And so I think, well, this is just a kickoff to this, because we do have other groups that we need to talk to. It's a small group, it'll get the ball rolling on this, and I, I like it. I'm, I'm hopeful that this will be the first step.
Does anyone have any more questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Tim.
I just want to make sure that council is clear that this, overall, the first resolution you've been provided with that was revised on Friday, generally explains why you're doing this, and then wraps in all of the four different documents. There's a resolution and an agreement for the 401A component and the four fifty-seven component. And this resolution would then close the DB to new hires in the non-union and open and establish these plans with that division. It's my understanding, and John can clarify this, that by the first resolution establishes a DC plan, which would then be kind of the umbrella for all of your future DC, and that's broken into different divisions, and there may be different or less paperwork related to that change. This resolution also goes through and identifies in particular with respect to paragraph three on page, I didn't click page numbers anymore, two. Those are the ultimate, those really have been, those blanks have been filled in by the staff and administration with the participation, you know, and assistance from MERS. And, you know, those can be changed. Those are decisions that ultimately you could make. The vesting, the probationary period, the retirement age, the period of withholding, the contribution levels. The one thing that I want to bring, bring to the council's attention is the definition of compensation, which is the variable that will be used to calculate these percentages against. We've received input from the payroll and the bookkeeper to make sure that we understand what is done and in that number currently for DB. And I want to make sure that, as well as, I did receive information from Pet Azotin Labor Council with respect to any issues related to the union contracts. So as of Friday, that list on the, to third page with respect to the 401A compensation definition includes, largely matches up with what you do for your DB definition of those wages. Is that the difference, or is it compensation?
Uh, defined benefit has its own kind of definition of compensation, which is either outlined per the MERS plan document or through union negotiation. So it may include overtime, it may include shift differentials and things of that nature, all the way down to uniform allowances, things, things along those lines. So with these plans, you actually have the opportunity to, you know, essentially pick and choose how you want to define compensation. So in other words, if the employer's going to contribute seven percent, it's seven percent of what? So is it base wages only? Is it gross wages? So in other words, is it, you know, box one on the W two, or is it box five on the W two, which would be Medicare wages, or some customized other definition? So this is up to you as far as how you want to do it. I would say that there's no best practice, I guess, as far as that goes. I mean, I, you know, there's differences maybe of opinion, where base wages are going to, you know, keep the contribution amounts at a minimum. But then there are also, you know, employees who are working hard and earning overtime and things along those lines, and that would be, you know, to me, a more fair way to do it is to pay people based on the amount they actually earn. They're contributing that same amount as well. So it would be, you know, you'd rather want your retirement benefit based on the amount of income you earn than your base wage.
Is the list that's on, it's what I, number three here, was this generated from us? And was this a reflection of existing circumstances and contracts?
Correct.
Okay.
This is, this list is longevity pay, including any prorations, the overtime pay, shift differentials, payment for periods of absence, vacation, holiday sickness, workers' comp, weekly benefits, the section one twenty-five IRC plan, pre-tax contributions, short and long-term disability, is the list. Those are, as I understand, are all things
That's exist.
Currently included in that number when you compare to the DB, slightly different terminology and concept, but we figure apples to apples, make it as close as you can. And to be clear, you've worked hard in your union contracts to exclude those tail end, and that paragraph there where you have banked and accrued vacation time or compensatory time lump sum payouts and employment's end and payments for health insurance stipends are excluded.
Right.
So that is, in the FAC context, you've worked hard to get that blip in compensation, which skews the payout based on FAC. You've worked hard to reduce that and eliminate that, that spike. This is the same concept here for this plan, so that you avoid those types of spikes at the end of the plan.
So there would be a spike in contribution when they receive their PTO or payout, but unlike the defined benefit, that's increasing their final average compensation, which means it's also increasing their pension for the rest of their life.
Right.
Which is, this would just be a one-time payment, you know? So again, however you want to structure that. It's not going to be a long-term legacy that you're going to have to continue paying on.
I do have one other question for Lynn. Lynn, do you see anything on this list that is a non-cash item? I just want to be aware of whether any of those things might be deemed income but not received as cash, that might, when you put in the calculation, they're actually feeling the squeeze a little more because they didn't get cash for it somehow. I'm just asking that question to make sure I understand, that we're all aware of that. I don't see anything myself, but
The only ones that I would question is the short-term or long-term disability payments because of how we handle those, with the employee signing over their actual disability check and then receiving full compensation for their regular income.
If they, so if they receive a short-term disability check, they exchange, they could give that to the city, they get their full paycheck. If they didn't do that, it potentially wouldn't be reported as compensation for that period.
Correct.
I still think it's a cash-to-cash issue. I just, I've encountered situations where people get deemed to have received income but don't actually receive the cash, and I want to make sure that's
Yeah, I don't see anything Yeah, I don't see anything...
...by and ask that question.
Yeah, I don't see anything other than the short-term that would be considered that. And since I've been here, I'm not aware of any employees that have chosen not to submit their disability checks to the city in return for full salary.
Well, I think this is an honest effort to try to things, keep things commensurate with what we've always done, so I'm happy to see that.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask one clarification question?
Yes.
Because I heard discussion kind of both ways on it, and that's on the same page that we're already discussing. Item 5B still contains the six-month probationary period.
I intended to bring that up, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have two questions. My first one is on the last page of the resolution. It's item number six. Can you elaborate as to the MERS alternative transfer rules and clarify that between the resolution establishing a uniform transfer provision? Is that different?
It's the same thing.
It's the same thing?
Yep.
Okay, and what is that?
Yeah, that's, so that's the resolution that would allow an employee who's currently in a defined benefit plan, if they were promoted or transferred or rehired, they would be able to go into whatever the closed defined benefit plan division would be, as long as there's at least one person actively still working in it.
Okay. My second question is, I just want to dumb this down for a second, just so I understand it.
It's okay, no problem.
So if I make $35,000 a year, okay, then my bi-weekly paycheck is $1,000, $1,100, something like that. Am I getting 55% taken out automatically? Because that would be the 5%. Is that 55, like, so $55 every bi-weekly check?
So for every $100 you make, it's $5.
So every $100 you make, okay.
Okay, and it would be, that would be the amount that goes into the 401A plan, but because it's pre-tax, it would probably feel like maybe, let's say, $4.
Okay, and then the city would also be contributing?
An additional 4% minimum.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep, you're welcome. And just to touch base on the probationary period, because I know it's come up a couple times and we didn't necessarily close the loop on it. Tim and I were talking about that, and there was something in a personnel manual about that, so that's why it was entered in there, but you can approve it with no probationary period and immediate participation.
Yeah, it actually, there's no jeopardy for us to get rid of it.
Especially with the five-year cliff vesting, they're not going to be entitled to any portion of it until they've been here for five years anyhow. I would say as a rule, or not as a rule, but I would say more commonly, we don't see them in defined contribution plans, it's typically immediate participation, so.
Well, thank you for being here.
You're welcome. If there are any other questions, I can stick around, or if you feel like they're all set? All right, thank you very kindly, I appreciate it. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary.
Are we deciding on this?
Well, I think we should probably at least discuss it. Go on.
I think that this is pretty much what we were hoping to transition to, so this, it seems to account for... Everything seems as though it's attended to all the reasons why we needed to make this transition. The good part is, this starts out small, so if we see some misgivings, we can attend to them, so nobody's going to end up being hurt by this. And it is the first step to, to transition to what inevitably is going to need to be more broad, so. But I do want to end up making sure that we do, the, do we need to find, is it only reflected one, in one place, that six-month probation period?
I thought it was corrected. There are two different agreements, so it would have been referenced in two different locations. So it was page two...
Page three of the resolution.
It's page two, 3B.
Two and the B, right, 3B, yeah.
And page three, 5B.
Yes, right, okay. So is, would it be better to simply strike those, or to, so that there wouldn't be any reference to a probationary period, or?
I believe it's a blank that has to be filled in, one way or the other.
Okay.
From the MERS point.
Okay.
I believe the corrected and revised resolution has it changed in both locations.
I didn't print that.
Stricken. Here, pass the stamp so they can get a seat.
My dry skin. What time turn these faces? Okay, 3B. Okay, there is no probationary period, all right. And I'm assuming that five would be the same, then, all right. Well, does anybody have any, any concerns about making the move?
Well, I would say we've got to do something, you know? But make sure you understand this doesn't solve our, the big picture and the big problem, but it is a small step in the right direction, you know? Question about it. I'm for the 457. What do you think? That's what we're talking about.
Well, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion. We agree to accept the 457 plan, resolution changing the City of South Lion Retirement Plan for new hires in the non-union administrative employee division. Is that right?
You should reference this, the resolution.
Revised.
Resolution number what?
Reference to revised resolution.
I can't read that. What is that? I can't see it.
It's right here. This top part, right here.
Resolution changing the City of South Lion MERS Retirement Plan for new hires in non-union administrative employee, new hires, Division 10.
I'll support that.
We need to either have the resolution designate who signs the documents, whether it's the mayor or the city manager, so that we can move forward with this.
As presented, the resolution would have the city manager sign all the documents.
Okay.
That's right. Anyone have any misgivings with that?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
All opposed, sorry.
Thanks again for coming out and giving us a hand with that.
Thank you. Thank you, same to you. Thank you.
Drive carefully, what up there?
We are on old business still, on the amended agenda to discuss...
No, to consider.
Consider, yeah. What, amending or...
Well, I'd like to just make the motion that we, we modify our fee schedule to reflect the $80 single permit for furnaces and air conditioner replacement.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Good catch on that one. New business. Cable Commission update.
Good evening, City Council. Steve Kaukunen here. Alongside me is Amber King and Rich Perry from the Cable Commission. Good to be here tonight. Good to see a couple of new faces on the council, which are not far removed from us, so hello to Councilman Carl and Mayor Dan, good to see you guys up there. I think perhaps if anybody out there in the public wants to run for City Council, come through the Cable Commission, it's a straight path to City Council.
Fast track.
Well, just a few minutes, giving you a few updates on, again, re-grounding us who we are and what we do. A few updates from FY '17, or this past calendar year, 2017, as well as identify some issues that we have within the Cable Commission, where we'd like to move on, and we actually are coming with a solution for you as well. So not just a problem calling it out, but coming to you with a solution. First of all, our charter as a Cable Commission, we see it kind of as twofold. One is to really, you know, help facilitate the development and formation of Channel 19. Again, we're not here to be the ones to set policies, set procedures, set things, we're just here to recommend, make recommendations to yourselves, which you can then go ahead and approve. And then, again, at the same time, trying to make Channel 19 a channel that we can all be proud of. And secondly, really providing the production, or the tools and technology for us to be able to deliver this Channel 19 out to the city here, and really, you know, help connect us to the volunteers here within the community that can help make Channel 19 a success. Again, we're not really the people who actually are going to be running the channel, we're not really the ones here that should be doing all the content and so forth, but we're here really to help facilitate all of this activity. As far as what we covered in FY '17, again, I think we've done a decent job this year of getting some new, fresh content out there, covering a lot of the different events that are going on here in South Lion. In your package, you'll see a number of the different events that we did cover and have on Channel 19. Now, unfortunately, it's about 60 to 70% of that has been produced by someone on the Cable Commission. Again, it's not, you know, our job per se, I enjoy doing some of the activities, but at the same time, if you're just relying on us, this list will not typically get much longer than this. And there are plenty of events, plenty of things going on within the City of South Lion that'd be great to cover, or to cover to a greater extent. So for instance, like the Cool Yule Parade. You know, I stood out there covering the Cool Yule Parade, but there's so many other things going on throughout that day that would be great to cover, interview people, talk to people, and really put together a really nice package, as opposed to just simply recording the parade and putting that on Channel 19. So again, we're covering a number of things, again, lots of stuff that go on here within the town, but fortunately, we ourselves are not able to get out to everything here in town. As far as progress, we've gotten to the point now where with the playback system that we have, we are now able to schedule the content to either start at the beginning, at the top of the hour, or the bottom of the hour. So we have a little bit more of a regular schedule going on out there. So typically, if something's, say, 45 minutes long, it will start at the top of the hour, play for 45 minutes, and then we'll buffer that with some type of slides or, not ads, but information slides that go on, on air, talking about different things going on here within South Lion. We've also provided some content out on a YouTube channel from Channel 19, so people who don't have access to the wild channel can still get access to some of the programming that we do have out there, out on Channel 19. Now, it's not yet something being picked up by Netflix or Hulu, maybe that's our next thing, we will stream through those channels, but right now, it is just on YouTube. And finally, we also continue to update our Facebook page out there for Channel 19. Now, the biggest challenge we have right now, as I kind of called out there a few minutes ago, is just really content. We just don't have enough fresh content coming in on a regular basis, and primarily because of that, because we don't have enough volunteers out there. We've occasionally had people stop by and drop in, you know, we sometimes have good leads, we do have a couple of guys who've been great at getting us some content, but unfortunately, Ben Wolak, who was a student here at South Lion, now a freshman down at University of Toledo, he's now at, down at university. So again, he produces some great stuff, but again, he's just one person, and now he's off to school. So again, we'd like to be able to figure out ways that we can better engage volunteers here within the town, the City of South Lion, to really help us out in streamlining content. And so even though that's the problem, we have a potential solution. For that, I'll turn it over to Rich.
Thanks, Steve. Hi, council, mayor. Yeah, content acquisition really is something that's one of the biggest needs for this, for this channel. This is a great resource for the community, and there's channels like this all across the country. And the proposal, or what we're exploring now is something that a lot of communities are doing around the country with a channel like this, and that is doing some simple underwriting, okay, within the business community. So for example, we have this channel, and we would provide at the top of the hour slides or some type of acknowledgement of businesses that are contributing to the channel. And so we've done some informal conversation about that in the community, and the response has been very good. We don't think it's going to be a problem getting underwriting for this channel to help fund the channel. One, one benefit is, we won't need to rely on the city for money, not that we use a lot of money from the city, but we use a little, so that's one benefit. Second benefit, of course, is we can do a lot more with, by having this funded through the, through the committee, or, excuse me, through the community. As Steve mentioned, there's a lot of things going on in this community, and we kind of just touch the surface. And when we do something, we kind of just hit that first layer. Yeah, we'll get the parade. Yeah, we'll get the speech. But there's so much more to these activities, and there's, and the historical society just mentioned, a whole bunch of things that they did recently. You know, we didn't get any of that, all right? And they'll be wonderful to put on this channel for the community. So there's a lot of things that we can do with this channel, but we feel the best way to execute that is to bring in some money that funds this channel, where we can pay, have a tiered payment system for different projects, for different programs. When I say tiered payment, I mean, and this is minimal payment, we're not talking thousands of dollars, okay? We're talking in the two digits, for the most part. You have Level 1. Level 1 is, you know, go shoot something like the VFW, the Veterans Day thing. One C-span level, shoot it 20 minutes, pop it on the air, you're done. Next level is a parade, where we got a little more going on, there might be a little editing. Level 3 might, it's going to be more complex, et cetera, okay? So that's a type of criteria that we want to put together for people who we can compensate to cover these different things throughout the community and throughout the year. So that's what we're exploring right now. There's, like I said, there's a lot of communities around the country that do this, and the way they have it structured from a valor standpoint is very similar to what we're looking at as well. But we're looking at doing something, top of the hour, slides for the, for the business with a VO, voiceover underneath, that would run, you know, almost every hour, every day through the year. And there's some other things that we would do as well, is just making sure that they're recognized. The key difference is, this is not something where we're saying, hey, you know, buy this for $5, and the sale's going on this weekend. We're not doing anything like that. It's a little more PBS-like in terms of how we present underwriting on the channel. So that's what we're exploring right now, so any questions about that?
Mary?
Would the Cable Commission be determining the tier, or is that something where I would call and say, hey, I would like you to do advanced editing on X, Y, and Z? I mean, would the consumer be willing to choose the tier they want? Or is that something you would determine, based upon your knowledge?
Oh, you mean the tier of, the level of content acquisition?
That's something we're kind of working through right now. We haven't really kind of formulated those plans as far as what we would do. And partly, it's, so for instance, we have some travel material on the channel right now. Now, it wasn't necessarily something that we would have requested ourselves as the Cable Commission, as opposed to what's going on here in South Lion, but it took me a lot of time to edit that, but I did it as a hobby. So I put it out on Channel 19, because it is kind of fun, informative content. So if I came to the Cable, so say I was not on the Cable Commission, if I came to the Cable Commission and said, hey, I have this great Rick Steves-type travel video programming, I'd like to quote-unquote sell it to you guys, or allow you to use it. Again, I don't know that we would allow the consumer to dictate that to us, so there's an element of where we are, as a city, would want to be able to say, here's the type of content that we want recorded, and put it out there to say, you know, for the, you know, key events that we want. Even right now, we have paid, you know, students in the past to record different parades. So there are, I think there's some element of us wanting to be able to drive the events that we would want covered, as opposed to simply just allowing any consumer out there to say, hey, I just was flying my drone around Kensington, so I want you to pay me $100 for that. So it's something we're working through right now.
Okay, because I was going to say, if I just called up and asked for something, I have no knowledge of what I'm asking for, so I would, I would kind of like to see it in your hands and have you dictate that.
Right, and that's most likely what we would do, and if someone comes to us and they're looking for a high-level production, then at that point, we'd probably say, well, what can you offer us? We're not just going to do what you ask for blindly, and just, just do it because you asked for it. Well, you know, if someone comes and says, hey, we want to cover this, this, and this in the community, it's all for nonprofit stuff, it's all good for the community, but we want to have a jib, you know, this nice crane camera, we want aerial photography, and we want to go live and all this stuff, we'll say, no, let's talk about the C-span level, right? But if they want to offer some, they want to contribute some, put some skin in the game for production, then we can talk about that.
Two more things. So I know you're on the search for volunteers, have you guys reached out to local universities, colleges, to see if you can get some interns?
We've, we've talked about an internship program, but until we have that solidified, we're not reaching out actively to Madonna, SPACs, et cetera, et cetera. But we've explored that with Lynn recently, and we talked about it as a, as a commission for a while, but no, I don't want to bring, bring in people until we really have a formal program in place.
And we have reached out to the high school in the past as well. So each year, I've gone to the high school, present who we are, what we do, and try to get volunteers that way. Again, that's where we came across... Again, that's where we came across Ben, as far as a volunteer.
Well, they still have TV 1 and TV 2 there, don't they? Is it at East as well, or is it just South Lyon High?
I think it's both.
Oh, great, okay, because I would assume with those classes, you would generate some type of, some type of interest. Are you still looking at grants? Have you seen any grants in the last year pop up that might be helpful to the Cable Commission?
I'm, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm still looking. I haven't seen any come up. I do get an update every week of any new grants that are posted to the grant website that we're using, and money honestly has pretty much dried up for most things that we do, other than, you know, state loan programs, things like that.
So, grants in this multimedia space, or more so in the arts space, they're certainly out there. We're not, this entity is not a 501(c)(3), and so, we're unlikely to really make any ground, or any headway there. If we did that, if we became a 501(c)(3), if we maybe merged with another organization, where we can have more power to getting grants, then, you know, it's a possibility. But I think at this point, we're, you know, because we're not that, I think it's unlikely we're going to do that, but that's certainly a good goal for the future. And there are entities like this, government and access or public access entities that are 501(c)s who can apply for things like that.
The reason is, I just, I'm a huge proponent of what you're doing, and I think it's really cool, just because this is technology. This is the way of the future. This is the way people get their information. How many people YouTube council meetings? Everybody, everybody does, unless you have Channel 19. But I, it's a bummer that you're not getting free money, because if you can harness that, why not? Why not? But what are you asking for today? What can Council do for you?
Actually, today, we're not asking for anything. We're giving you an update and letting you know where we're heading. And so, really, I don't think there's anything on the table for you to approve or deny. Instead, just, because, you know, absorb what, where we're heading, give us feedback and direction, and I think that's what we're looking for today, unless you guys have anything else to add to that.
Yeah, I would like to add real quickly that we're not moving from, okay, we're looking for free content that people have given us, to a, we're going to pay everybody for all the content. We are still relying on the community, the library, the Historical Commission. If content is out there, if you've recorded something, or you have pictures of an event, and you want to put them together or give them to us to put together, we can do that, and that's what most of our content is, and we're fine with that. But there are some events, like Rich and Steve mentioned, it would be great to get all of Cool Yule or all of Pumpkin Fest, not just one of us with a camera filming just the parade, but the whole thing and put it together. So, that's where we feel we would need volunteers that we could compensate to pull together a really nice production, so.
Go ahead, Maggie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the Culture Arts Commission, what I'm hearing, could have filmed the exhibit that they had. They could have done some interviews with some of the people that actually did the quilting. They could have put together a little 20-minute whatever and handed it over.
Everybody in this room has a high-definition camera in their pocket.
I don't.
Almost everybody.
Almost.
But, you know, acquiring content is really, really easy to do. Most people may not understand how to do it. We've also offered some training in the past. We'll certainly do that, more of that next year.
Go ahead, Glenn.
Okay, our cable franchise agreements don't have PEG monies. I can't help but think, especially with Comcast coming into the city, we have AT&amp;T around, and wow. So, it seems to me that if you guys had a wish list, and you could actually generate some kind of document that would outline exactly where some kind of backing from those entities might actually be applied. I can't imagine them being resistant to if it's not some crazy, I mean, they're clearly not going to build a studio or something of that nature, but I think, I can't imagine them being unreasonable to say, we haven't paid a dime in PEG fees the entire time that we've been in here, WOW in particular. I think that they would entertain an offer like that to support the local generation of using. I mean, we'd be putting it on their resource, for heaven's sakes. So, I would encourage you to at least entertain the idea of coming up with some kind of a pitch that we might be able to push towards those entities. And I was wondering, if you remember at the onset of this, there was an awful lot of angst about people making submissions, and how it had to be screened, and all that kind of things. Is it simply a matter of the fact that there's so little product that you need to be concerned about, or have you come up with some process that actually you feel is reliable for vetting stuff before it actually goes on air, or?
There really isn't content coming in that we're not already a part of.
Yeah.
So, vetting that content is really simple to do. Now, let's fast forward six months from now, where we do have, or hopefully have, funding from other entities in the community, in the business community. And now, we're able to dispatch, you know, a couple of shots, a couple of productions a week, or at least one a week, or something like that. At that point, yeah, we'll be, you know, we will, with this whole process, as we spoke with Lynn earlier or last week, we will have in place, or we already do have in place, for example, a waiver form, because, yeah, we can use your likeness on Channel 19. And we have a, we also have in place a form that says, it's something related to viewing and assuring the content is applicable to the community, it's in the best interest of the community, and that there aren't, you know, goes beyond our guidelines. So, we have those things in place right now, don't really use them, because we're already policing everything. But, yeah, as we get closer to that, and then now, we're actually building, as I mentioned earlier, kind of these tiers or these criterias of production, that can also dictate how much we would pay for production, and along with that are these other guidelines and processes that we need to have in place when content becomes more frequent.
Well, I hope that you guys at least give some thought to the idea of trying to come up with some generalized pitch that we might be able to push on those cable providers. Thank you, though. I mean, this is, this is all great and moving in the right direction, so.
I really quickly want to thank you guys for coming out tonight and getting us an update on the progress, and just being a part of that and knowing how difficult it was for you guys and all of us, really, to get on a schedule where things start at the top of the hour. I mean, Steve and Rich, I know you guys, really, and Amber knocked that out of the park. That was so huge, because we would have content from town, and no one knew when it was starting. So, at least they know now that if they catch it at the top of the hour, it's going to be something new, most likely. So, I can't thank you guys enough for that. That's such a huge step on all this. Great work on the Facebook page with the updates on what's on and what's coming up for events, and it's really great to see the game plan going forward with the possibility of underwriting and taking the next step, because this team has proven in the past that they will accomplish these goals. So, I'm excited to see what you guys can do, and I know you guys are looking for more volunteers, and I'll make sure to get the word out as much as I can.
We have, this team has a lot of ideas for content and for programs, so it isn't just things that are happening in the community, where we're reactive to that, where, hey, there's something happening, we need to go get someone to cover that. We also have program ideas that we want to initiate ourselves. And also, if any of you or members of the community have program ideas that we want to produce ourselves, then let's explore that as well, okay?
Thank you, guys.
Ditto everything he said, and I never understood why some of these younger people aren't just flocking to you to do something and contribute, because, as Mary said, this is the high-tech future stuff, okay? And you're certainly the vehicle, okay, to help, you know, carry it, okay, certainly. It baffles me that some of the young college-age people aren't, you know, just doing anything to put something on a channel and say, I did that, you know? Anyway, I ditto everything Dan said in all the ways, okay? Appreciate everything you've done.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your commitment to the city.
All right. New business discussion related to joint public safety building and possible funding options.
Okay, I was asked to place this on the agenda by Councilwoman Parisian. It's something that was part of our strategic plan for 2016 to 2020, was to create a combined public safety, police, and fire building. HRC did, at the request of Chief Collins and Chief Kennedy, a preliminary proposal outlining what manner we could do this, what would need to be done, and it is a three-phase project, if we wanted to go with HRC and move forward with this. I also did some research into possible ways that we could pay for this. You have in the packet information off of ECIVS, the grant website, talking about Michigan's local government loan program, which is a low-interest loan program, which this would qualify for, as well as information regarding the USDA Rural Development Program. They have a direct loan program. It has, again, low interest. It goes through the federal government. It's for things called community facilities, which a public safety building would be. I did have a chance to discuss our situation with the USDA rep in Flint. Due to the median household income of South Lyon, which is $52,097, we would not qualify for any grant funding through USDA, because our median household income is too high, but we would still qualify for the loan. It's a 3.5% loan. What makes USDA more interesting, if you're looking at funding, rather than a lot of your bonds or traditional funding mechanisms, is they do a 40-year loan, which allows you to spread the costs over a longer period than your traditional bonds, which are 20 to 30 years.
Is this to bond the facility or the study?
That would be to bond the facility.
Okay.
I wouldn't see a reason to bond the study, no.
The reason why I asked to bring this up is because in March of 2016, Council had met to discuss a vision session, and we all got together, and we discussed what goals we had for South Lyon. And one of the goals of Council and the department heads was to have a joint complex in which fire and police would be combined. And if you take a look at where the fire department and the police department currently are, their location is not ideal. The space is small, the whole area is congested, and both of those buildings are not in good condition. They're very, very old. The roof on the fire, or on the police department, it needs to be replaced. There's just a series of foundational issues with the fire department. So, I think we need to consider upkeep over the years, maintaining those two buildings, or should we just reinvest or invest in a complex that is away from the downtown a little bit further, and we open up that space to allow new businesses to come downtown? And when I spoke with Bob Donahue, he left a little bit, but he was, he left a little bit earlier, but he was supposed to discuss this as well. This is in line with the master plan. If we were to do this, it would be in line with the master plan, and it would open up space to bring new businesses downtown. And we would also be doing a service to our community and providing, I think, faster service, because you would be able to get the fire trucks, as well as the police cars, off onto a main thoroughfare, as opposed to the fire trucks having to maneuver around the South Lyon Hotel. So, I don't know if Chief, you would like to speak to this, or if you would like to speak to it on behalf of Chief Kennedy's, Chief Kennedy's behalf. But all in all, based upon what we have discussed in March of 2016, this has never really been brought to light. I do appreciate Chief Collins and Chief Kennedy taking the time to have this study done, and I think it would be, we would be remiss if we didn't discuss it at least once. At least this is something, a goal, whether we decide to move forward with this or not. It's merely a discussion piece, but it needs to be brought to light. It's something that we should at least consider. Regardless, I think we should enhance South Lyon by doing this. This is my opinion, but given our financial constraints, I understand it wouldn't be feasible, but, go ahead. I don't know if you wanted to speak to it.
I wouldn't have a whole lot to add, but I think the majority, if not all, of Council is aware that the police and fire departments occupy actually three buildings. The buildings are anywhere from 25 to 50 some years old. They are constantly needing upkeep. The training slash administration building does need a new roof. We had budgeted, we attempted to budget for that this year. There were not funds to allow that. So, we had some minor repairs done, and we may make it through the winter, or the rainy season, we may not. The police building, I can speak to that. The main police department is, is and has been too small for a long time. There's not room even for my office or the detective to be in the same building as the rest of the police department. Councilperson Parisian spoke very well to the traffic and congestion issues for the fire department, and that's far more important to them than it is to the police vehicles, which are already out on the street most of the time. Fire trucks have issues with response time being extremely important in their medical calls and in their fire calls, and then they have the complication of turning radius of not only the engines, but particularly the tower. And yes, we would love to be in a joint building with the fire department. There might even be a way to incorporate some public meeting rooms or something, since we were unable to accomplish the community center project. And of all the sites we looked at, Chief Kennedy and I have talked, and we would just love to be immediately south of Wendy's, west of Pontiac Trail, and east of McHattie Park, and that would provide some added security benefits to the park itself by sheer proximity to the police facility. And I thank you for bringing up the issue.
Go ahead, Carl. I think this answers my major question about the whole thing, that when I reviewed it, when it comes to whose idea was this in the first place, but it was our idea, wasn't it?
It was Council's idea.
We, the previous Council, Hubble, Roth, and Clark didn't come up with this and try to sell it. We had the idea and asked them to review this, didn't we? That's how it was.
In this instance, they have only done what we've asked them to do, and the cost thus far has been minimal.
Okay, all right. So, we're revisiting, I read it all. I don't disagree with any of it, but it's not feasible at this time, I don't feel. That's all I have to say.
Maggie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would agree with the vision, and that's what visions are. They say, this is what I'd like to do. I agree with the vision that there is some sort of joint facility for both fire and police. I just don't know how you're going to pay for it. I really don't, and I think it's completely irresponsible to even move forward with this at this time until we know exactly where we stand financially. For me, it's very hard to justify brand-new buildings for, what, 17 employees, police, how many with fire? And we're potentially looking at pushing a $5.1 million unfunded pension liability out into this community. It has to be paid down. I'm not disagreeing that we don't need the facility. We do need it. This is not the time. I don't even know why this is here, but I understand. I don't think there's any dispute or disagreement that the facility is needed. I think it's a timing issue. That's all. It's just a timing issue. And visions don't mean that you get what you want today. Visions are, you plan down the road. We have a budget that I only see one year at a time. Nobody's given me a three- to five-year budget where I can see this facility being budgeted in and how it's going to be paid for, whatever. If you want to put that in a three- to five-year plan, then give me a budget for three to five years. But the only thing I see is we're just scraping by year by year, because that's all I see is a year-to-year budget. So, at this time, my opposition is solely to the cost. So at, at this time, my opposition is solely to the cost, not to the vision.
I guess I have a couple of comments. Is this something we could budget for, police and fire? Could you guys put away funds, or could we even take this to the polls and ask our voters to vote on this, and maybe we could do some type of bond, something, something along those lines? Because I think if we allowed the voters to speak to this, and if they want it, then they can obviously put forth funds toward it. But I don't think that we should let this go so easily. I don't think no is the correct answer here. It may not be fiscally responsible at this point in time, but I think we need to find another way. Because what better investment to our downtown is to move police and fire to a better location, faster response times, and also opening up the downtown at the same time to allow new businesses to come in and renovate that area. If we're trying to move South Lyon forward, we're, we're doing it at a snail's pace. This would be an excellent time to move, and I think we should put it to the voters. If they think it's a great idea, let them speak to it.
Yes, I, I would agree with that. In fact, Lynn and I have talked about that, and a mill to take care of funding police and fire, because you need to get some of that pressure off of the general operating fund. So one way to do it would be to have a dedicated mill and, and let the voters decide. I mean, it's coming out of their pocket, and, and if they want to pay for a new facility and have the costs and the numbers in place, I, I, I think you could also get operating money for police and fire, too, to pay for salaries and things like that. So it'd be a total, I mean, that's what Lyon Township does. They, they have a dedicated mill. I think Green Oak has a dedicated mill. So use a dedicated mill, find out what you need, and let the voters decide.
Both of those townships have dedicated operating millages, which would be different than this, because this would be an operating and capital facilities millage.
You could do both.
I think you're investing in your police and fire, and I think you're investing in your downtown at the same time. And it might cost upfront, but again, if we put this to the voters and let them decide, this is something that I think would really take away, just because the people of South Lyon want to see our downtown flourish. And right now, it's, it's, it's getting there, but it's still pretty stagnant. We have a long way to go. But I think this might be a good opportunity for us to kind of hit two birds with one stone. I don't really want to invest more money into the two buildings that house fire and police at the moment. I would rather see that money go toward a new facility. But that's just me.
I'll say something.
Carl.
Okay, I agree with everybody at the table. You happen to go over to Plymouth Township Hall and look at their facilities with the fire and the police all nearby on a, one drive-through with a color, a hu, a huge setup, matching sandstone buildings, okay, marble floors, archways, you think you've walked into a Roman palace. It's just absolutely beautiful and stunning, okay? And I'd love to have something like that for South Lyon, but I don't see how we can come up with it in our wildest dreams. But we certainly can do something, as Mary said, to be, put something on the ballot and get the people, input from the people. How far do you want to go with improving our facilities? Which needs improvement? The fire department isn't big enough, and the, and the police department. When they built that, it was the greatest thing on earth. I went to the open house when it was opened, and all they'd been working on it was a trailer at the time, you know, years ago, which my employer bought. And it, but it's, it was a wonderful transcendence into a new building, but it's easy to see it's, it's under 5,000 feet, isn't it? It's that.
I, I'm not sure in the square footage.
I think you need, you need at least 10 to 4, I agree with it, 10 to 14,000 feet estimate, you know? But I don't see it happening in a decade. But I agree with it, okay? Your turn.
I, I mean, honestly, I think everyone makes some good points, and it is a great vision, and I could see it, the property opening up there would be great. Bob, it's a shame he's not here, he'd be salivating at the mouth for that property. But is it something we, I mean, I'm glad you brought it up, because it's good that this didn't fall between the cracks, and people are going to hear about it, and I think that's a good way to get the ball rolling on something like this. I think at the same time, obviously, everyone's aware of the financial issues that we're battling, so let's get the word out on the street and see what the voters want to say. I mean, did anyone else have anything they'd like to add to this discussion?
If we're looking to do this, and we're looking to do both operating and capital facilities, are we looking to shift all of the operating costs of police and fire to a millage? And are the members of the council familiar with how much of our budget goes towards those two services?
I don't know if anyone else up here has looked into it that much. Maggie, go ahead.
I, I think what I would do, Lynn, is I would present council with the options. Is, what I would do is, I think it's hard to say what that mill should be, and I'm going to talk a little bit about mills tonight at the budget part. So I, I think for me, what I would like to see is a series of alternatives. What, what would it cost if, if maybe $100,000 or $150,000 of operating for fire and police came out of a mill? And then the funding, a 10-year mill maybe for whatever it is for the construction of whatever this is, because you don't have to buy any property. This is solely just construction costs. Your, your real estate's already purchased. And then take a look at what the mills would be if you increased the operating for fire and police. Or maybe what you do is give an option of only police, because that seems to be where the real problem is. The legacy costs in the fire department are the ones that are just really destroying the budget. So we may, you may want to focus on the police department and leave fire out. I don't know. I mean, you're going to have to look at the range, but present us with some options.
Okay.
Mary?
Did you want, sorry, I spoke a lot. Go ahead.
Actually, the, the notion of the property being already a given, I think you're, we've got a park master plan that that's already spoken for, so.
Bob did speak to that, and he said there is space for it.
Well, I bet Parks and Rec would have a different view of.
Well, we can collaborate. I don't, I think this is a collaborative effort. I also think that we need to send out some type of educational pamphlet, because I don't think it would be fair to just slap this on a ballot. I think we should at least send out some type of material or hold some type of meeting or meetings to educate our residents and let them know, hey, this is what the plan is, this is what, how it would benefit, but this is also the pros and cons to it as well. I don't think it would be fair to just discuss it at council meetings and hope that people are listening, because I don't think very many people do. So we need to educate and make sure people understand pros and cons of what's going on.
That's a given. I mean, gosh.
A ballot initiative, you, you can't do a mill like this without doing a ballot initiative.
You bet.
Tim, I, I don't know what the rules are. I thought there was some change in the rules legally in terms of being able to use taxpayer dollars for ballot initiatives. Whatever that is, I'm just.
There are guidelines that you have to follow very closely.
Yeah, I'm just, she's spotting that for you. But you already knew that, so.
But I appreciate both fire and police taking the time to have HRC conduct a study, and you guys are very diligent about this, and this was done a while ago. This was done in July 2016, and it's just coming up now. So I'm actually kind of disappointed that it's taken so long for us to get to this vision, but better late than never. At least we can, even if this fails miserably and dies, at least we can say we looked at it and we gave it a good faith effort.
It's a starting point, too. I mean, eventually, something will have to take place. So the notion that this is going to, we'll end up being able to present some valid information to the community overnight is just ridiculous. So, I mean, this, there's going to be an awful lot of discussions necessary to try to flesh out what the possibilities are, what's the most viable understanding of what something that we could accomplish would be, and, you know, so, but this is a great start.
It's going to take a long time.
We need to have workshops.
Most things like that do take a large amount of effort, and so it's good to see that it was brought up tonight. If no one has anything else.
One more thing. I, I do not want this to get lost. So can we maybe tickle this for another time where we can discuss it? So maybe February.
Okay. First meeting or second meeting?
First meeting, please.
I will put it on my calendar now.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward, under new business, number three, consider approval of Oakland County IT agreement.
This is something the council has approved and gone through in the past. The reason this is back in front of the council is we are asking to add the GIS services as well as authority to allow contractors that work with the city, such as HRC and our planner, to have access to the county's GIS system. There's no cost associated with this. It is just services that Oakland County does provide, but they do want you to sign the agreements so that they, you understand basically the rules for being involved.
Go ahead, Carl.
Did you have any concerns about, you know, there's language in here where they can end up changing the rules of the game down, down the road?
Currently have an agreement with them. This is an expansion of the services, and they want every, they're doing this with a whole, all the communities. They want you to sign new agreements. I prepared, I don't know if it got circulated yet, but I noted some things of issues. This is not something that's likely to be negotiable.
No, it'll shake or leave it, yeah.
Right.
It's really more of a, an eyes-wide-open type of thing, and these are no cost. You know, there are some potential risks, but you've already, you really have those already, because you already have this agreement.
Well, and it's not like we're going to waive making ourselves available to this information, so, I mean, they kind of got us, so.
I think the city's been very, I haven't heard of any problems with the service you get through the county under this agreement. It's really just an expansion and a restatement of that, a new execution of a new document that incorporates those new services.
Carl. I got to say, I reviewed this one, I didn't, I didn't know a thing about this. This is totally new. I called Phil Wyper, okay, and asked him to explain this to me, because he's county representative, and we talk quite a lot anyway. And he got back to me later on, and we're already, we're already on board with the whole thing. It's, it's just an ongoing, and if we tried to do some of these things on our own, it might cost us hundreds of thousands or into the millions. Yet no small communities can do it, and the Oakland County does this whole thing for all of Livingston County, Green Oak Township and everybody. So at other communities, Oakland County does this for. It's a far-flung magnificent service, and we need to partake of it, okay? It's a necessity of the modern era, okay? And we got to be in it, we got to move in it. Thank you.
Yep. We got a motion?
Yeah, make the motion. We accept the IT, the Rosel. County Service Inter Local Agreement. Oh, the IT Service Inter Local Agreement, is that it, the motion?
This is one that would have been good to have the cover sheet for just the suggested motion. Is it essentially just, you want the Oakland County IT Service Inter Local Agreement? Yeah, okay, expanded services. You see that, Carl?
Yeah.
Do you want me to get the magazine?
Yeah, I get it, I can't, I don't see what you're looking at. My thing here, where is it?
Right there, buddy, right in the middle.
The big one?
The bold print.
Regarding the RE, just, if you just read that line, Oakland County.
Oakland County IT Services Inter Local Agreement, Expanded Services. Is that it? Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, under new business, consider resolution changing the nominating petition deadline to coincide with Michigan election law.
And make a motion that we approve the resolution changing the City of South Lyon nominating petition deadline to coincide with Michigan election law.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number five, under new business, consider cancellation of the second council meeting in December scheduled for Christmas.
This is something that is up to the council every year. This year, the second meeting happens to fall on Christmas Day. The city is also closed on the 26th for a holiday, so the earliest we could schedule the meeting would be on December 27th. I'm not aware of what council members' Christmas holiday plans are for that week. I know a lot of people tend to travel, especially with two-long weekends, but it has been the past practice of the council to cancel that second meeting due to the proximity to the holiday.
We're not knee-deep in anything that's really, has to be entertained. If something were to come up, we're always available to, to get a meeting going, so I'm, I'm fine with this.
So are we canceling and rescheduling?
What was that?
Are we canceling and rescheduling, or just canceling?
Just canceling.
Okay.
But I would need a motion, because it is an official meeting.
Is there further discussion on this?
Make a motion that we cancel the second meeting in December.
The second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Moving on to the budget report.
Okay, I have finished one portion of the spreadsheet, and I'm passing it on to Lori to finish in putting all of the amended audited expenses from the last fiscal year. I have a budget proposal from the fire department prior to Mike Kennedy leaving. It is my hope that Lori and Patricia will be able to get the audited figures input over the next week, and that we will start meeting with department heads, going over what their planned capital expenditures are in the other departments, as well as sitting down, trying to figure out where we're looking at, so that we can begin a preliminary meeting in January with the council on the budget.
Let's have some, some roughed-in numbers for that first meeting, would you please?
We will.
May? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I sort of went over my notes over the past two years regarding the budget process, and what I am going to do is sort of present to you some issues that are important to me, and then that way, hopefully, you'll be able to address the majority of them when we actually work on the budget in January. I, I think there's a, a little bit of defeating sort of mentality when, when you walk into a budget meeting and all of a sudden you are given a lot of things that people want to see done, when you've already prepared a preliminary budget for people to look at. So all I'm doing is moving the process up a little bit and saying, these are things that are kind of important to me, and then that way, as you continue the next 30 days working on the budget, you'll have an opportunity to address those issues, rather than having a workshop in January and then me bringing them up and then everything being changed out. So what I would like to see, in order for me to approve the budget, is I'd like to see some sort of plan for dealing with the city's unfunded pension liability. I don't care what the plan is, I don't have any skin in the game. I just need to know what, what is our plan for dealing with the unfunded pension liability? I don't care if you term it out to 10 years or 15 years, there is no plan in place, and I, I think I need to see what the city's plan is for dealing with that unfunded pension. I'd also like to see a line item funding for the buyouts of the vacation time. Has, has Bob Martin been completely paid out?
Yes.
Okay, so he's, his contingent liability is off the books?
Correct.
Okay, what about Chief Collins?
No, he's not.
Okay, so, and then we have the employees coming in March, so we're going to need some funding to, to get those. I want to do that. I want to know if the current mill that's established for the debt servicing and the sewer bond is going to be sufficient for the next cycle. is gonna be sufficient for the next cycle. As you know, those mills can be adjusted to a tenth or a hundredth out, so you can make very minute adjustments to those mills. So, even if we're short $10,000, I would like to see that mill adjusted, so that it completely covers that debt. I also wanna know when the mills drop off for the DDA parking lot. I also wanna know if we shift the mills coming off of the DDA parking lot, and we shift them to the general operating budget, I wanna know how much more revenue we will have that potentially could be a source, I don't know, to, to begin funding the unfunded pension liability, you could put it in for beginning with Volunteer Park, I really don't know. See, I, I don't have anything to, to look at, to analyze, because I, there's a lot of these unknowns that are out there. I'd really like to see a really good analysis with respect to the Water Department, I'd like to see a trend analysis of the water taps over the past five to eight years that have been used to fund sewer and water repairs. I'd like to see if that trend is on the downside, which I think it probably is, since we are almost built out, and that, those tap-in fees were being used to fund repairs to water and sewer. So, if, if the trend is, is that that fund is going down, that source of revenue is going down, I'd like to know what your plan is, is, as to how we are going to fund those, those repairs going down, you know, in the future. So, I, I need to sort of see that. I think I'd also like to see an updated draft of a resolution apportioning how much of our water tap fees go into this fund and how much of it goes elsewhere. I've asked for this, this resolution twice now, I haven't received it. Supposedly, there was something 25 years ago, I really don't know, but it's probably time to update, Tim, it's called an enterprise resolution policy, dealing with enterprise funds, so I think it's probably time that we revisit that and decide how much of our water tap fees are gonna go into this fund. We're gonna need an updated utility analysis as to the water and sewer fees, I think that expires in 2018, so we're going to need, I'd like to know, at the time we start meeting, what that updated utility analysis is with respect to the water rates and the sewer rates. I'd like to also know how much additional revenue would be generated if we raised the administration fee regarding the quarterly billing from $6 to $10. I didn't see any analysis of that last year. I'd like to know if our untreated water charges are within the range of other communities. I don't know if you could contact Great Lake Water Service, because they have a water authority, because they have a lot of industrial places down river, so I would think that they've got pretty good experience at dealing with untreated water. So, I'd like to know where we're falling on that. Also, there is this new legislation out that I've been reviewing, for anybody that's interested, it, I don't know if it's gonna pass yet, but it's dealing with House Bill 5298, 25313. This is the big, big revisions that are coming with OPEBs, and they will have mandatory fundings. So, if you have a moment, you could go to, just Google Michigan 5298, and go to their legislative analysis, and in there, it will tell you that some of the funding requirements start in 2019, so that would fall within this next budget coming up. So, that is dealing with post-employment benefits, basically with healthcare, so I need to know where we're falling in terms of funding on that, and what our budget is gonna be for that. Also, I would like a report by January, the details that were laid out in the auditor's report, whether or not there's been any movement to comply with the auditors in terms of some of their issues that they had with the city. I'd like to have all of the auditor's issues addressed, all of them. I, I personally do not wanna look at another auditor report listing items that, that the city should be doing. Some of them are repeats from two years ago. I'd like to know if the school district is adjusting any of its mills. I don't think you can sit there and discuss millage rates in terms of what we are doing with our millage rates until you know whether or not the school district is adjusting theirs. In fact, that's probably the reason why the impact was not felt this year, is because as we were adjusting our mills, they were lowering theirs, so the net effect was, people really didn't notice it that much. Also, I, it's something that came up, and we talked a little bit about this at the party, this was with Slara. If Slara is gonna be moving out of town, then we need to know what is going to be the rent payment that they're gonna be paying, because that has to be a budget item. I mean, they're not, they're not gonna be.
We actually have a flat contribution rate to Slara.
Does it, well, okay.
So, while they may be having a change in rent if they were to relocate, their rent would be spread among all three entities, and potentially would not change depending upon what services they were able to add. They're still looking into that, they're waiting, getting all of their ducks in a row, they may not even be eligible for the building that they're looking at.
Okay. And last, I would like to know, how many hours does the fire, is the fire chief working? Mike Kennedy worked how many hours as fire chief?
He averaged 30 to 35 hours a week.
30 to 35 hours a week?
Yes.
That was considered part-time?
Yes.
I would like to see a discussion on, how many hours did he actually put in? I mean, probably 30, 35, was he putting in 40, 45, 50?
I would presume that he was not unless there was a significant fire event. He worked Tuesday evenings for trainings, he worked Fridays during the day, he worked weekends, but he did have a full-time job elsewhere.
Because, as I look at it, that is the only department in the city that does not have a full-time employee, and I think that what has happened over the years is that as the city begins to grow, develop, become more professional, the Fire Department has been a little bit, we haven't really addressed some of the personnel issues. I, I did talk to Mike a little bit, he did feel that was a, a full-time job, that he, I don't know how you feel, but his opinion was, is that there was enough work over there that could keep any individual working full-time. So, I would like to take a look at that. If we need to make an adjustment in another department, give one employee up to give the Fire Department a full-time employee, I'd like to explore that option. I just wanna look at options. I, I can't make a decision on the budget if, if I don't know what my options are, so those are my comments on the budget. Next, I had an opportunity to talk with Plant Moran at the, at the party last week. Plant Moran is willing to come into the city and provide everybody, anybody who wants to, a free two-hour seminar on government finance, and they're willing to do that in January on a Saturday. I don't know if anybody in council's interested in attending it, would like to go to it, but it's a free seminar, it's gonna take about two hours, Plant Moran. I would love to go, but I'm, I'm not gonna ask him to come for one person. So, I don't know if anybody else in council wants to attend it. You're gonna learn about your city, you're gonna learn about finance. Comes right into the budget season.
Did anyone else have anything on the budget?
Okay.
Moving ahead to the manager's report.
All right, I do not have a lot this evening. The primary is a reminder to the public that with December flying by, City Hall will be closed on December 25th and 26th in observance of the Christmas and Christmas Eve holidays. We will also have City Hall closed in observance of New Year and New Year's Eve holidays on January 1st and 2nd, the following week. A reminder to all of the council members that the Chamber Holiday Party is this Thursday, it's at South Lyon Hotel, there is a $10 charge for attendees to attend. If you're interested, contact Andrea Meyer at the Chamber. Today was the deadline for applications for the DPW Water, Wastewater Superintendent position. I will be reviewing those applications and hope to hold the interviews over the next two weeks. We've made a great step forward with the administrative non-union MERS, which makes it that much easier to move forward with hiring for this position, and I hope to be prepared to offer a conditional offer of employment by the end of the year to one of our candidates. Lastly, this morning, DTE contacted me, and they will be coming through the city doing tree trimming along a single power circuit. They will be reaching out to the residents with letters and individual visits or door hangers if the resident isn't home prior to beginning the trimming. I also have a letter and a map of the area that we will be placing on the city's website for people, so that they can see where the tree trimming will be taking place. Other than that.
Is there something going to be in City Hall, too?
Yeah, copies of the same information will be in City Hall.
Okay, thank you.
Should put on the website, too.
Yeah, I said I was gonna be on the website.
Awesome.
There was the primary place. Since we are not meeting on Christmas Day, I wanna wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I hope you really enjoy the holiday seasons, I know this is one of my favorite times of the year, and I look forward to seeing everyone in the new year, if not before.
Thank you.
Lynn, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
About the status of the applications that you're gonna be receiving or have already received, are you solely making the decision, or are you going to be incorporating the opinions of the DPW workers, or the wastewater water workers as well?
It had been my intention to involve members of both departments, however, we have had applications from members of our current staff, so that makes that tricky. I have talked to Bob Martin in the past, and he said he would be willing to go over them and possibly sit in on the interview panel with me as well.
I couldn't be happier to hear that.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Yep.
Okay. And then, I also have a question about the weekly report.
I, I am waiting on Mike Kennedy's, I have four of them stacked up, I was gonna send them out today, but Mike said he was behind on his, so.
I know, you guys are busy, no worries, I just kinda wanna touch base, thank you, though.
All right, and we'll move ahead to council comments. Carl, why don't you start us off tonight?
Do you want me to go first?
Yeah, Bud.
Okay. Thank you, I hope we got a little bit of time here, and although it's not much audience, I think I oughta say how I appreciate being on this council, and my goal and guideposts for the first six months to a year are basically damage control and save money. And if everything that comes before us, work out these parameters, then that's where I'm gonna, I'm gonna go. In the future, I'm gonna have ideas that I'm gonna bring forward, some of which, on the surface, costs some money, just like this idea we talked about tonight for the Service Center. I've thought about that one for years, and I know I could, my idea would save hundreds of thousands of dollars, okay, we wouldn't need HRC to tell us how to think. But I've got other ideas, okay, about things that are gonna have to come forward, and it'll probably be a little bit later than sooner, you just gotta ease into things, okay? But I'm gonna, I'm gonna have some things in the future for next year, gradually, that, to bring forward, and we can all discuss it, and we can make it happen. We can make our, our improvements come true, instead of just talking about it. Anyway, one, one peculiar thing, Lynn, Lynn, yeah, having been, you mentioned tree work, okay? Having been a tree man for 20 years or more, and been in all aspects of the business and the industry, I, I, when I go through the bills, and I know Normar is a separate corporation, and they are the preferred corporation or service agent of our own DPW, because I sit there and watch them take down the trees, and how they do it, I even talk to the crews when they're in my backyard. What, where does their bills or charges to the city appear on the ledger? Because I know that each tree I'm looking at is close to $1,000, between $600 and $1,000. I never see those bills for Normar, because I've looked in the past. How, how is that billed to the city, what, what part of the budget does that go through?
It goes through the DPW budget. Unless the invoices are coming in under a different name, under the Normar, they would show up under the bill registry as a payment to Normar for each of those invoices that are submitted to the city.
There and there, it's just, we, we don't do anything until they submit, so.
Well, I've watched those, some of those trees came down just the last month, of course, last, this, maybe that wouldn't be in this.
Just because Normar is doing work within the city does not necessarily mean that they're doing work for the city.
Correct, understood, yeah, but the ones I was focused on lately were the ones in the easement, the Presbyterian Church right there, on Liberty Street up here, those, those two tremendous trees, okay? And Normar is the contractor, and on my little electric scooter chair, I've sat back and watched them, okay?
To my knowledge, the city has not contracted for tree removal along Lake Street, and since Lake Street would be a RCOC street, most likely those trees were taken down at the request of the Road Commission.
Okay, Liberty Street and the Wells Street side of the Lake Street, crossing for Presbyterian Church, across from 135.
And it may be that the Presbyterian Church contracted to have been taken out.
You might be right, they've been spending big bucks on their property over the last three years, but I, I just thought, since I was, I just thought I'd bring that up. They come in at, the DPW's discretion, or Oakland County's discretion, to mark the tree, is that how it's done?
Correct.
Okay, I just don't, maybe you're right, Glenn, I've just never seen the, the bills on there.
Yeah, when they, when they do work for us, they show up in the, in the log of bills.
All right, okay, that's all I have, thank you.
All right, thanks, Carl. Glenn?
Okay, the discussion about the water tower, I don't remember HRC being the ones that did the inspection on what was actually necessary to be amended, so.
Dixon Engineering did the inspection, but they do not put together the bid specifications. Even they agree and say that they do not put together the bid specifications.
I thought Bob Martin did that.
Well, no, Dixon would've actually.
Together the bid specifications? No, we, to do that, you need to know the exact types of paints, the amount of time that the water tower is going to be down, what the flow is going to be for the system through hydrology without the tower, because it's our largest reserve of water. There are a lot of things that go into that, that.
Well, we've got a history, too, so it's, they're not starting from scratch, I mean, so, but Dixon typically would, had been the, the engineers that looked at it.
They are the ones that.
To determine what was failing, what needed to be amended before a paint job was taking place, so.
Correct, they did, and they put together a report, but not specifications to bid it out to actual contractors.
I have to say that almost 10, well, it was what, $9,100 bucks? It's an HRC thing, so I guess, there's an awful lot of zeros typically, but, okay, just wanted to say Merry Christmas to everybody, hope everybody has a great holiday, and try to stay, stay warm, hopefully the snow will, I'm thinking, two days before Christmas, we've got snow, I'm cool after that. I'm hoping that's a wrap on the snow, so. But, everybody have a good holiday, thank you.
Thanks, Glenn. Maggie?
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to say that I've had the opportunity to be in Good Day Cafe a couple times, and I think everyone in my unit of town is extremely anxious for them, they are opening on Thursday. I was in there this morning and had a great cup of coffee with Gary Fagan. Jen was working in there, she's excited, her staff was there, I just think that it's just gonna be just a great, great addition. I got a peek at the menu, I, I think my favorites are gonna be the Cobb Salad, their soup of the day, they have either Italian or corned beef sandwiches. of the day, they have either Italian or corned beef sandwiches, there's going to be allergy-free food there, gluten-free food. Also, the restaurant's going to have a full coffee bar with cappuccinos, lattes, and fraps. So I am excited, we're anticipating a line on Thursdays, particularly around lunch, so we'd like to welcome Good Day Cafe, where every day is a good day. So welcome Jennifer to the community. Also, speaking of coffee, I'd like to thank Big B for hosting the South Lyon Area School District as a guest barista, and that was our own Melissa Baker that was there. The proceeds from that event went to the South Lyon Area Youth Assistance, and they'll be having their awards banquet in the spring. Additionally, as we all know, the Christmas lights are popping up all over town, this is probably the prettiest that I've ever seen, South Lyon. One particular subdivision, which I happen to live in, so I wanted to disclose that, is what everybody calls the Christmas Sub, and that is Hidden Creek Subdivision. It is absolutely spectacular, if you haven't seen it, you need to drive through it. It's on Nine Mile and Dixboro, people come from Brighton, they come from Milford to see this, because it is the whole subdivision that is lit up, it is absolutely fabulous. And I'd like to thank all my neighbors in the subdivision, who I'm pretty close to a lot of them, that take their time beginning in October and prepare this subdivision for the residents of the City of South Lyon. It's truly, truly a gift that they give to everybody to come in. Park your car, walk for, you know, a half hour or 45 minutes, and you will just have a wonderful, wonderful time. And please enjoy the Christmas lights that are in the downtown area, I've been downtown a couple nights last week, and some of the Christmas lighting displays on Liberty are just fabulous on Lake Street, either direction. So even the downtown is just looking spectacular, including the Christmas house. So I just want to thank all the downtown individuals who are sprucing up and just really, really making the downtown look fabulous. So other than that, I'd like to say Merry Christmas to everybody and Happy Hanukkah, which actually starts tomorrow at sundown. I'd like to extend best wishes for the comfort of the season and for peace. Good night, everyone, and thank you for inviting all of us into your homes this evening. Enjoy this season with the blessings and the good thoughts of Mary Mitt, Happy New Year, and we'll see everybody in January 2018. Good night, everyone.
Mary?
Just wanted to say Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and remember to shop local, so support your downtown businesses. Thank you, have a good night.
I will second that, Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy New Year, and Happy Holidays to everyone. Really quick, I just had a couple thank yous to Ron Brock and Ron Beeson for allowing me to hop in with them and go for a tour of the wastewater treatment plant, the science over there is absolutely mind-blowing. Somehow, in all my years of going to school here, I missed that field trip, so, but it is, it's something else, and so thank you very much to those guys, they took the time out of their day to explain to me what our great Public Works employees and our wastewater treatment employees do on a daily basis here, and I'll say this, is when you know people are doing a good job, like I associate this with broadcasters and referees, is you know they're doing a good job if you don't know who they are. So thank you very much for that, and we'll move forward to adjournment here.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?